Let's go, ladies. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of May 15, 2025, was convened in the conference room of the administrative offices of the Board of Education, Fifteen Dallas Drive Way, New Jersey. Statement of compliance setting forth daytime and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and a roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. I would ask everyone to please stand for the flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated.
Okay, so to start this evening, I'd like to share, this week is Special Education Week in New Jersey, and this year's theme is Planning the Seeds of Education. The theme celebrates the foundational role education plays in the growth and success of all students, including those with disabilities. Wayne's commitment to inclusion is evident through its active participation in events like the Lincoln Tunnel Challenge 5K, the Gathering Spot, which is a district goal for this year, the ongoing work of the Special Education Parents Advisory Group and the Wayne Special Parents Association. Additionally, our involvement in Unified Sports showcases the power of teamwork and belonging by bringing students of all abilities together through athletics, and we also have our inclusive events like the Turkey Trot 5K. Creating safe, supportive environments like CPAG and WSPA meetings along with community gatherings through the Gathering Spot provides families with invaluable opportunities to connect, share resources, and build a sense of belonging. We are especially grateful for the dedication of parents and guardians who participate in all these educational events that strengthen our community and enhance learning for all. By continuing to raise awareness, celebrate accomplishments, expand inclusive programming, and offer meaningful engagement and professional development, Wayne is cultivating a culture that values and supports every learner together. During Special Education Week and beyond, we reaffirm our commitment to ensure that every student has the opportunity to thrive, grow, and reach their full potential. So, the next part of this evening involves recognizing our outgoing student representatives. So if you two would come join me at the podium. So, in New Jersey, the inclusion of student representatives on boards of education is guided by a state statute that was enacted in 2022 that mandates the participation of high school students in government. This law establishes the legal basis for student involvement and shapes the framework within each school district to develop policy in this area. The state requires that all school boards serving students in grades nine to twelve include at least one student representative at its meetings. While student representatives at board meetings are relatively new in New Jersey, as I mentioned, I would like to mention that the Wayne Board of Education has invited students from each of the high schools to attend Board of Education meetings for decades. This year, we have two exceptional student representatives who are representatives of this year's senior class. Both of them are interested in studying business, and both of them will be off to great universities this fall to continue their studies. First, Addison Deal from Wayne Hills. Addison will be attending the University of Alabama Honors College for Business in the fall, and she'll be majoring in Marketing. And then we have Isabella Grechek from Wayne Valley. So Isabella will be attending the Kelly School of Business at Indiana University this fall, and she will also be majoring in Marketing and also Business Analytics. Okay, so they don't go away unscathed. What I did is I like to have our student representatives ask a few quick questions about their, or answer a few quick questions about their experience sitting here at the board meetings for an entire year. So that's a lot of time, and I'm sure you've learned a lot. So I was hoping that each of you could answer two questions. The first one being, if you want to get started, what have you learned as a result of being here at the board meetings?
Being a student representative has really helped me to learn more about the impacts and changes happening around me. It has helped me to connect with all parts of Wayne Valley and learn more about what the board does and how their decisions affect our school. This position has helped me to keep my eyes and ears open on things around me and not directly face me because of the effect that they have. I now realize how many students do not know what might be happening around them or the weight of their opinion. I think that it is important that students are aware of the decisions being made for them in order for them to constructively build upon those decisions in order to make their school environment a much better place, which is exactly what being a representative has helped me to realize.
Isabella, would you consider being a member of the Board of Education in the future?
In the future, serving as a board member is something I'm open to. This experience has certainly given me a different perspective and helped me to be more aware of the Board of Education's role within our school system. I am someone who likes to take on leadership positions and believe I have a good perspective on what a student needs to thrive. However, there is still much time and factors left undiscovered to make a decision.
Addison, why don't you share a little bit about what you learned being up here for an entire year at participating board meetings?
Being a student representative was such a valuable experience. I learned a lot about leadership and communication and also got a real sense of how hard it is to run a town. It's not just about making decisions, it's about listening to everyone's perspective and finding solutions that work for the whole community. It gave me a lot of respect for the people who work in our local government and how much effort goes into keeping everything running smoothly.
Addison, same question to you. Would you consider being a board member someday or running for the Board of Ed?
When it comes to serving as a board member, I'm not really sure what the future holds. It's definitely a lot of work, and there is always some problem that needs to be solved, but it's a fantastic opportunity, and I love being involved in leadership.
Thanks to both of you for being excellent representatives for each of your high schools. So now I'm going to ask our high school athletic directors to come forward, Mr. Bailey, Mr. Karsicich, and we're going to spend some time recognizing our student athletes for just some exceptional performances in the past few months. So, I'm not sure who.
Yep, we got the order.
You got it?
We got the order.
Okay, great.
I'd like to first thank the Board of Education Superintendent Dr. Toback, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Kazmark for allowing us to represent Wayne Hills High School, and Honoring Elizabeth Dankwa for her outstanding performance this year during the winter season of Winter Track. Liz has made tremendous impact on our program over the last few seasons. She has broken and reset our school record in both shot put and discus this winter alone. Liz was Passaic County Champion, Big North Champion, the North One Group Three Sectional Meet Champion. Liz has set a new record of 39 feet, seven inches, and three quarters in the shot put. She finished fourth in the Group Three Meet and placed 23rd in the State Tournament of Champions. Liz is also qualified for the New Balance Nationals in Boston, where she placed 39th in the country. Liz will be attending the University of Rhode Island in the fall on a full athletic scholarship. Congratulations and thank you again.
Okay. We have a couple different accolades I'd like to get across. First is swimmer Sarah Rodriguez. Sarah had an undeniably historic high school career, setting a new standard in our program with seven school records and six county records. Her dominance in the 100 backstroke, winning two titles at the meet of champions, speaks to her exceptional talent. Sarah has proven to be one of the most technically skilled and consistent swimmers our program has ever seen. Her ability to deliver at the highest level time and time again, especially as an anchor for our relays, has been exciting to watch over the course of the last four years. She is talented across stroke and across distances. A perfect example of that would be her ability to break both the 500 freestyle and 50 freestyle record in the same season. They are very different events and not even her strongest events. Sarah's accomplishments at Wayne Valley have been nothing short of extraordinary, and we're excited to see what she can achieve as she takes the next step in her swimming career at Texas. The opportunities ahead of her are limitless, and with continued hard work and dedication, she has the potential to reach even greater heights in the sport. Competing at the collegiate level will change her in new ways, and we have no doubt she will rise to the occasion. We look forward to following her journey and can't wait to see all she accomplishes in the years to come. The Wayne Valley High School Competition Cheerleading Team has achieved historic success this season, marked by resilience, determination, and a strong sense of family among its members. Seasoned veterans and new athletes trained rigorously, ultimately leading them to win the Independence Division Title and become national champions. In a remarkable week, they also secured second place at the Passaic County Championship and triumphed at the Big North Conference, showing their talent and grit. The team, overcoming numerous challenges including injuries and routine changes, went on to win the state title in a new division, achieving an impressive score of 93.9, which was the second highest score in the state. Coach Caitlin's recognition as Coach of the Year underscores the strong leadership that fueled their accomplishments. The season has not only been about victories, but also about building lasting bonds and learning the importance of teamwork. The Wayne Valley Competition Cheer Team's journey and the legacy they created reflect their dedication and unity, ensuring that this season will be remembered as a significant chapter in their history. So they won the Big North Independent Division Champion, Big North Overall Champs, that was 28 teams involved there, second place counties and state champions in Varsity Coad Division, and Dakota Hanchin also received second team All-State Awards. Okay, now I'm going to call the team up. Victoria Arthur, Jasleen Aviles, Lillian Barbera, Leaden Barnes, Lauren Beatty, Sienna Bon Giovanni, Ella Cappizano, Gina Decker, Ava Ganguzza, Olivia Gavin, Deirdre Gonzalez, Isabella Granado, Dakota Hanchin, Alana Kazan, Sienna Knick, Lily March, Gianna Mongeli, Maya Munoz, Avery Patois, Jalen Vasos Perez, Emily Porfido, Juliana Paglisi, Natalie Wachowski, Alexa Sabino, Yvette Tennyson, Maya Truman, Amber Lee Velasquez, Elijah Velasquez, Reese The Wayne Valley Wrestling Team also had an outstanding season, setting a new school record with 21 wins. For the first time in program history, the team earned back-to-back state championships, marking a major milestone. They also captured titles in the Big North Conference, League, County, and District, sweeping Nine wrestlers advanced to regionals with three, Noah Zindaki, Adam Suzay, and Adam Nufal qualifying for the NJSS IAA State Championships in Atlantic City. Noah Zindaki achieved an impressive individual milestone by surpassing 100 career wins. This historic season reflects the dedication of our student athletes, coaching staff, and the continued support of the Wayne Valley community. Okay, are we ready? All right. Devin Bolton, George Collaguah, Ben Cooper, Alex Holdfeld, Wilson Javier, Dominic Lally, Ryan Massey, Adam Nufal, Alex Perez, Cole Perry, John Pignataro, Adam Suzay, Justin
Just wondering where the Wayne Valley Wrestling Coach is? There you go.
Who was this guy on the end? The youth board member on the end? Oh, well, it's got him confused with Brian Porter.
Send him my congratulations. I guess my best.
Yeah, that's amazing. Thank you so much.
Hmm.
Dr. Toback?
So to just quickly wrap up my reporting, so I have to report the following data related to HIV incidents in the Wayne Township public schools. There were eight incidents of HIV investigated since my last report, and three of those cases were deemed to meet the criteria of actual HIV incidents.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to, the board's going to go into executive session for personnel matter. We should be about a half hour to 45 minutes, and then we will come back out and resume the meeting.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Should we allow the student reps?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Ladies, it's all yours.
Good evening. Tomorrow, Christopher DeLolli, Wayne Hills, class of 2016, will come to speak to Mr. Schell's AP Government Students. Mr. DeLolli is the Communications Director of the U.S. House of Representatives member, Susie Lee, Democrat for Nevada. Mr. DeLolli is a kind enough to make time for Wayne Hills students, speaking to them about working in Congress, life in Washington, D.C., and what our students can do if they choose this career path in politics. As for spring sports, individual county champs for track and field include Elizabeth Dankwa in two events, disc and shot put. For shot put, she broke the school record for the second time this season with a distance of 39 feet and six inches. Senior Mackenzie Moore in the long jump. Wayne Hills Boys Tennis Team is having a great season. Current team record, 14 and 3, 8 in the league. Passaic County Championship for the 20th consecutive season, and won five positions in the tournament to earn the full 20 points. Congratulations to Wayne Hills senior Nicole Gelber. She is this year's recipient to the Italian Teacher Association of New Jersey, $1,000 scholarship. This award is only given to one student. She will be studying Finance and Accounting at Seton Hall University in the fall. Wayne Hills Student Council has created a new initiative this year to recognize and celebrate staff members on their appreciation days. Most recently, we celebrate Teachers Appreciation Week with fun activities for each day. On Monday, we threw a breakfast for the entire staff to enjoy, catered by Maschino's Food Services. We named Tuesday Thankful Tuesday. We had all personalized letters for each teacher on their classroom door. Each letter was unique and special to the individual for the specific teacher, written by one of our Student Council members. On Wednesday, we had a Cabana Coffee Truck come, and each teacher was able to order their favorite coffee or tea to start the day. On Thursday, Student Council and their advisors walked around the school with a snack cart. Staff members were able to pick their favorite snacks as a midday pick-me-up. On Friday, Student Council handed out teacher's Superlative Awards after voting on different categories. Additionally, all week we had teachers' facts going on. 60 teachers provided a random fact about themselves. Staff members were able to meet new people, having engaging conversations, and make connections all week. On Friday, they submitted their final guesses for a chance to win prizes courtesy of Student Council and Principal Rook. Throughout Student Council fundraisers and initiatives with the fun trends and videos showcased on our Instagram, we have been celebrating our school spirit for Wayne Hills, maintaining a warm and joyful school climate to benefit all.
Wayne Valley had a great end to April and an impressive start to May. First, on April 23, the school celebrated Administrative Professionals Day. We celebrated the faculty and showed our appreciation throughout the day. They truly are a group of unsung heroes. On April 24, 25, and 26, Wayne Valley hosted the annual SDA Performance. Both teams, blue and white, put together a great show surrounding the themed Cartoon Network with jazz, palm aerobics, and tap routines. White overall Sangina Dayeth and blue overall Lily March, along with their captains, showcased their amazing talents and choreography. Congratulations to all the girls on an amazing season. Wayne Valley also celebrated Take Your Child to Work Day. Different clubs and departments held special events to make the day special for the kids. The Foods classes prepared yummy pancakes for them, while the Art classes helped them to create their own pieces. Throughout the day, there were many fun activities that created a great atmosphere for the visiting kids and for the students as well. Our photo program has continued to bring in more success. Three Wayne Valley students received awards in the Johnston's North America Photo Competition. Approximately 5,000 students enter every year. Danielle Brown won a third-place award in the Photo Illustrations and Manipulations category. Delilah Stewart won third place in the Academics and Community Service category, and Giotta Chen won an honorable mention. Congratulations to all the students. On Wednesday, May 21, the Wayne Township Automotive Program will hold their car show. This will showcase our talented students and their amazing projects they have produced all year long. The event will be held at Wayne Hills, and food and music can be expected. Also, on May 21, the Wayne Valley Art Program will be hosting their annual art show. This will take place in the Wayne Valley Media Center and will allow guests to enjoy all the artwork made throughout the year, from visual foundations all the way to AP Studio Art. The exhibit will stay in the Media Center for students to enjoy throughout the rest of the week. Stop by to see the amazing talent these students have produced. On May 1, seniors celebrated Decision Day. Seniors were asked to wear a Seniors were asked to wear a shirt or item of clothing representing their future school or path. Throughout the day, students took pictures celebrating their success and final decision. During lunch, the Guidance Counselors helped to make an ice cream party to cheer us on and signal the end of a long and stressful college process. Last week, Wayne Valley celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week. To start the week off, peer leaders sent anonymous letters to different teachers, letting them know just how much they mean to their students. Later on in the week, Student Council delivered food to the teachers, and the CAD students made custom gifts. Teachers enjoyed a nice coffee truck on Thursday, and kudos bars from the culinary students. On Friday, the PTO held a luncheon, and the Graphic Design students made custom mugs for each teacher. Throughout the week, the We At Club held a fun gift raffle for the teachers. The students of Wayne Valley truly appreciate all the teachers do and say thank you for being such inspiring mentors. On May fourth, Wayne Relay for Life partnered with the Color Run in honor, in order to honor our late Principal Mr. Palzuski. Valley students joined together to remember the beloved educator, mentor, and friend that Mr. Palzuski was to so many. All proceeds from the event went to the American Cancer Society. It was a great way to celebrate the life that was lived by our amazing principal. During these past two weeks, students are officially taking their AP exams. Good luck to all. Lastly, spring sports have flown by and have had amazing success. Wayne Valley Baseball is sporting win after win and are keeping the record strong. Wayne Valley Softball has also had an amazing season with Captain Sofia Pasora breaking the school record of one hundred twenty-two career hits, and Senior Captain Emma Politz reaching a hundred career hits. Congratulations to Boys Tennis for reaching county finals. Girls Flag Football, Boys Volleyball, Golf, and Track and Field have all had amazing seasons. Well done to all the athletes. Congratulations to Wayne Valley for an amazing school year. Amongst change, hardship, and stress, you were all able to persevere. Good luck to the class of twenty-twenty-five and all their future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you. Addison Isabella, on behalf of the Board, I want to thank you for your time and your dedication that you've put in over the last year, almost. I hope the lessons you've learned here that you can take with you when you go to college and when you read the book and see what the book says, then you can tell everybody in the class, this is the way the world really works. I thank you, and I wish you all both the best of luck. I know you will be very successful no matter what path you go. Thank you. All right, at this time, the Board's gonna move into executive session for about thirty to forty-five minutes. We have a personnel issue along with a legal issue, and at that time, we'll be coming back and we will be taking action. Thank you. Have a motion? Move. Mr. Jude Dano, Mrs. Reguloso. Thank you. Thank you for your patience, I appreciate it. We have one revision to the agenda. Item V is invictor, number eight is going to be withdrawn. At this time, we'll open the portion of the meeting to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meeting under old business. Do I have a mover? Move. Mr. Jude Dano, Mr. Baddish. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on an agenda item? Come out, sir.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Jason Leschwitz, Twenty-Six Madison Street in Wayne. I'm also a parent of a sixth-grade violist at Anthony Wayne, a lifelong violinist, and the supervisor of his formularic in public schools. Over five years ago, I stood with two other advocates to help establish Wayne Strings Program because we believed our children deserve access to a complete, well-rounded arts education. Today, I'm frustrated and saddened to see that vision quietly dismantled, justified by the claim that the program, quote-unquote, only serves two percent of the population. But two percent of what population? That figure lacks context. And worse, it masks the deeper issue that this program has never given the support it needed to grow. Let's look at the facts. The Elementary Strings Program serves about a hundred and forty students across nine schools with just one teacher trying to do it all. At the middle school level, one strings teacher is stretched across all three buildings, while each band teacher is assigned to a single middle school. And more concerning, many students and parents have shared serious concerns about that one middle school strings teacher's effectiveness. At the high school level, there's no strings teacher whatsoever. There's no pathway forward for strings students once they leave middle school. And meanwhile, elementary band, which serves about four hundred fifty students, has almost five dedicated teachers. The Gaze Program, which serves approximately a hundred students across the district, has two full-time interns as staff members. And lastly, at the high school level, there's about a hundred and sixty students enrolled in band across a combined student population of twenty-four hundred. That percentage is nearly identical to the strings enrollment at the elementary level. Yet, the band program continues as it should, even after staff reductions, while strings is being eliminated entirely. As Clifton's Art Supervisor, I've seen firsthand how a program like this can thrive when it's supported. We started with just a handful of strings students like Wayne. Today, we have over a thousand. It took vision, consistency, and patience, but we believed in the long game and it paid off. Recursion backs us up. Strings students consistently outperformed their peers on standardized tests. They developed precision, focus, resilience, and emotional intelligence. Strings traits every district should want to cultivate, not eliminate. Wayne didn't cut a program that failed. It cut a program that was never properly staffed. And now, instead of investing in solutions, we're taking away one of the few spaces where some students truly find their voice. And I urge you, don't let this be the legacy of this Board. Don't quietly close the door on a program full of potential, and please reconsider this decision and restore strings, and let's not dismantle opportunity, let's rebuild it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. One second, young man. Thank you. Okay, you're good.
Hi, my name is Henry Posusna. I live at Eighty-Two Point View Parkway. I'm a fifth grader at APT, and I've been part of the Strings Program this year. I play violin, and it's something I really love doing. I'm here tonight because I heard the district might be cutting the Strings Program, and I'm really upset about that. I've worked hard all year learning how to play, and I was really looking forward to continuing next year in middle school. I want to keep getting better and be part of the Wayne Strings Orchestra. I don't understand why something so important would be taken away. Music is just as important as sports, reading, or math. It teaches us discipline, creativity, and how to express ourselves. Please don't take away the Strings Program. Please give me and other kids the chance to keep learning and growing throughout music. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Adam Gora, and I live on Eighteen Canton Road. I'm a seventh grader at Skylar Colfax Middle School. I've been playing the violin for four years and have been part of the School Strings Program for almost that entire time. I began my strings adventure back in fourth grade with Miss Edel. She was a wonderful teacher. She was always enthusiastic and ready to answer any of my questions. She helped me get into my first orchestra, where I learned many new techniques that came in handy later on. She often spent extra time helping us improve at the end of class, and she'd often hand out stickers as encouragement. In middle school, I met Miss Weiner, a very skilled strings player who has been teaching for over thirty years. She introduced me to shifting, shifting into higher positions on the violin, a very valuable skill, and she often stayed after school to help students who needed extra support. She sometimes was strict, but she always rewarded our hard work. Over time, the violin lessons started feeling less like a class and more as a fun group, where we learned and played music together. Miss Weiner started to feel more like a friend than just a teacher. Then this year, I joined another orchestra, led by the new elementary school teacher, Mr. Topielski. We meet every Thursday at Wayne Valley. The orchestra has been growing to around fifteen students, ranging from fifth graders to high schoolers. Over time, we've built friendships while learning to play challenging and fun music together. Reflecting back, I've noticed one quality that all my strings teachers share. They always make time for us, even outside of class. They go above and beyond, often spending their own money on music instruments and even, even small treats. Most importantly, they're enthusiastic and make everybody feel included, helping build a strong and supportive string community that I will never forget. That is why I'm asking you, please, do not cut the Strings Program. It is a valuable opportunity for students to grow, especially for those whose families cannot afford private lessons. It gives students a chance to practice playing in an orchestra, just like my younger brother, who will be eligible to join next year. As a beginner, he needs this kind of training, and I know from personal experience how much it can benefit him in the future. The Strings Program has helped me become a better musician, and I hope it will continue to help others for the years to come. Please, take this from me and my friends, do not cut the Strings Program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. My name is Albert Gora. I live on Eighteen Canton Road, and I'm nine years old. I'm a third grader at Tunis Dai. I'm here today because I really want to be part of the Strings Program next year. My big brother Adam was in the Strings Program, and I remember how proud he was when he learned to play the violin. I used to watch him practice at home, and sometimes he even let me try his own instrument. That made me so excited to join the Strings Program one day, just like heated. I'm already practicing, so I'll be ready for next year. I've been waiting for my turn, and now I'm being told that it might not happen. Learning music is important. It helps kids like me concentrate, be creative, and feel proud of something we work hard at. Playing an instrument isn't just fun. It also teaches us responsibility and teamwork. I hope that you can pretty please with a cherry on the top keep the Strings Program in our schools. There are many, so many kids like me who want this chance. My mom always says, if there's a will, there's a way. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
That's a hard act to follow.
Oh, boy.
Good evening, Board of Ed. You may not have ever seen me here because this is indeed my first meeting. I am a soon-to-be resident of Wayne, Thirteen Cook Road. My name is Nancy Klassen. My family has deep roots in this community for over seventy years, and a history here. My mother was part of the first graduating class of Wayne Hills High School in nineteen sixty-eight. I am proud to continue that legacy and by becoming a part of this community, both as a resident and as a lifelong music educator. With twenty-five years of teaching experience in the field of music education and as a current member of the Board of Directors for the New Jersey Music Educators State Board, I am here to express my concern over the potential elimination of the String Program of Wayne Schools. While I understand there are budget constraints that districts face, I urge you to protect this vital program. Music education is not a luxury. It is a powerful academic and emotional tool. Research has repeatedly demonstrated that music supports cognitive development, boosts academic performance, and enhances students' emotional and social well-being. The Arts offer a unique outlet for creativity, collaboration, and problem-solving, especially for those students who may not find their niche in traditional academics or athletics. And not to mention, it is a proven fact that students who study music score higher on the standardized tests. Wayne's music faculty is among, is among the best in the state. The district has built a reputation for strong music programs, and eliminating any part of them would not only hurt current students, but would also impact the district's standing and appeal for future families. Furthermore, I, as a music educator and as a board member of the State Board for Music Teachers, will be happy to assist in researching and complying a list of grants and alternative funding sources that could help support and maintain the String Program. There are resources available to ensure the financial limitations do not jeopardize the opportunities our children deserve. Please know I am committed to supporting this program as a future taxpayer here and for the community in any way that I can. Thank you for your time, your consideration, and your dedication to the students of Wayne.
Thank you.
One last thing. I have a compiled list of twelve grants.
Dr. Tobek?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Ursula Gura. I live on Eighteen Canton Road, and I'm a public school educator as well as a parent of two boys at our school system. I moved to Wayne from across the ocean, filled with hope and the belief that my children would receive a wonderful, enriching education. However, lately, I've been heartbroken to hear things from my sons that I never expected. My younger son is worried about the condition of his school building, especially a leaking roof, and my older son has had to miss schedule classes because of the same issue. In addition to these concerns, I've learned that programs my sons are cared very deeply about are being cut. We definitely can do better. There are school districts around the world operating with smaller budgets, yet they manage to prioritize what's the most important, students and their growth. I have emailed many of you twice on behalf of myself and other families present here today, and I received no response. One parent shared that she did receive a reply to her email from the Assistant of the Superintendent stating that the String Program only serves two percent of the student population and that it is why it will be cut. To that, I say a hundred and fifty students is not just a percentage. It's nearly six, four classes of children. That's more than many programs currently being supported. If you look into those faces, you will see joy, discipline, teamwork, and just good kids. You will see children gaining confidence and building friendship all through music. Music, especially in small groups like string ensembles, is more than just an activity. It supports social, emotional learning, teaches commitment, and offers a safe space to express feelings. It can be life-changing. The cost of the entire district-wide Strings Program is approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's a cost equivalent to one, maximum two, central office administrative positions. Is cutting this program really a smart and student-centered choice? With the arrival of Mr. Topielski, the program began to flourish once again. The orchestra is sounded better than ever. Children look forward to rehearsals, to performing, and to growing. This program only takes two periods per week in each school, but its impacts last a lifetime. Please, let's brainstorm solutions together. Let's find a way to keep this program alive. Support and save the Strings Program, not only because it serves a hundred and fifty students, but it also because it enriches all Wayne Township Public Schools. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Thank you for hearing us out. Thank you for all of your, your efforts to this point.
Sir, excuse me, can you give us your name and address, please?
My name is Greg Paluzni. I live, I live on Point View Parkway. I've been a resident of Wayne for the last two years. I moved from Elmwood Park. When I was researching where I want to move, I took different districts under consideration, different towns. different towns. Wayne offered a lot of the things that I was looking for. One of the things that was, that was important to me is all the choices that the kids have, all the different programs. So we made the decision to, to move into Wayne. The last two years have been overall very positive. The schools overall are very positive. But in the last few, few months, we've gotten the information that the Strings Program is being cut. My son joined the Strings Program last year. He found it very, 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 very good. He took advantage of, of his, of his, of his friends. He, he found time, instead of playing on iPad, to concentrate on something else. So please, take under consideration what the Strings Program can, can offer. Do your best. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Gary Frank, and I live at 53 Joseph Place. My son has been with the String Program since fourth grade. He is now a sophomore in high school. We decided to move to Wayne. One reason was the school district was outstanding and superb, so thank you for having that go on. Getting rid of the Strings Program is more than just getting rid of a program that two percent of students attend. It is getting rid of music, a music program that's very necessary to help kids. My son has learned focus, he has learned community, he has learned math. Don't tell him that. He has learned to be a better person, he has learned the love of music, all different kinds of music. And that's because of the Wayne Strings Program. And getting rid of it only hurts the community, it hurts the students as well. And I think it's very important that we continue with this program. I've heard different ways to make this happen. I don't think this should be a, the budget doesn't allow, so we're getting rid of it, period. I think there's a lot of options that are available to the Board and the residents, and perhaps having a special meeting that you promote as a meeting to discuss the Strings Program. Unfortunately, one of the things I've seen is a lack of, of promoting the Strings at the high school level. It's, it's, it's a funny thing when you say there are so few students in the Strings Program in high school. Well, it's not promoted to the parents, to the families, and it needs to be, so that kids who are learning Strings in elementary and middle school have a place to come in high school and be a part of that program. Thank you, and I hope this all works out for the best. Thank you.
Members of the Board, my name is Nancy Frank. I live at 53 Joseph Place. My son Benjamin has been with the Strings Program since fourth grade. He survived through the period where COVID took it out, and we didn't have any music. Band came back first. That never understood to me, because band was wind. Strings came back second, a year later, with a lot of pushing and a lot of requesting to resupport that program. I have been advocating for the Strings Program all through his middle school years, when there wasn't going to be a teacher at first, to his high school years, where he's probably one of five students in Wayne Valley High School that has Strings class. But there are many students that are still there. They were discouraged during middle school because they did not have the support they needed, and they felt that they couldn't go on. When we don't promote a program, when we don't support a program, the students lose. We lose students that have talent that they just need nurturing for, to build that confidence to move forward. Not all students are sports-minded. We need to have enough programs for these kids to have another outlet. Without music and arts, they will not have those opportunities. The Strings Program has been separate from band, and I never understood that. There's no reason to separate the programs completely when they're both music programs. Why would we support one without the other? Can you explain that to us? You've heard tonight that there are opportunities that could support this program even despite the budget cuts. I want to hear about how you're going to explore those grants, because if there are opportunities, it makes no sense to cut a program, not when these children can really grow and blossom in it. My son was so excited to be part of the All Strings Orchestra After School Program and actually get to conduct one of the last concerts. He has been working very hard, and to lose this program is very disheartening. So I really, truly hope that you will reconsider this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak on an agenda item?
Seeing none, I move to close.
Mr. Pisakos, Mrs. Rigoloso. Do I have a mover for the agenda?
I'd like to move the agenda in total.
Mr. Giordano?
I'd like to move the agenda in total, please.
Second.
Mr. Patterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Alquinn?
Yes.
Mr. Battiskill?
Yes.
Mr. Faber is absent. Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Paul is absent. Mr. Pisakos?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
And Mr. Payler?
Yes.
Motion passed.
At this time, ask, we have some retirements. I'll start down to my right. Mr. Alquinn?
Today, I'll be reading for Taser Marza. With over twenty years of devoted service, we celebrate the retirement of Taser Marza, a valued and steadfast member of the Wayne Township Public School District. Taser began his career as a custodian at James Fallon Elementary School, and for more than two decades, he dedicated himself entirely to that building, a true testament to his loyalty, consistency, and deep knowledge of the school. Throughout the years, Taser became a go-to figure at James Fallon, always dependable and ready to step up one year, including taking on head custodial responsibilities. His familiarity with the building and commitment made him a true reliable part of the school's community. As Taser closes this meaningful chapter and steps into a well-deserved retirement, we extend our heartfelt gratitude and best wishes. Thank you, Taser, for your incredible service. You'll leave behind a legacy of dedication and pride that will not be forgotten.
I'll be reading about Beatrice Puchella. Beatrice, otherwise known as Bee Puchella, will be retiring from the Transportation Department on June 25th, 2025. Bee began her career as a van, as a van aide on September 1st, 20, oh, 2003. Over the course of her twenty-one-plus years of service to the Wayne Township Public Schools, she has been dedicated to her work, responsibility of assisting students with special needs every day as they ride to and from school. Bee has truly made an asset, has truly been an asset to the Transportation Department, and her years of experience and knowledge will be missed. Bee often chose the routes with the same children so she could watch them grow each year. Bee especially enjoyed riding with our young preschool students and assisting them with buckling their seatbelts. She took extra work in the middle of the day just to ride with them. The Transportation Department and the Wayne Township Public Schools wish to express her sincere thanks and appreciation for her outstanding support and dedicated service. Her commitment to the special needs students of the district will be hard to, will be hard to replace. Beatrice will be missed, but never forgotten. From all of your friends, coworkers, we wish you a long, happy, and healthy retirement. All the best, you be.
I'll be reading first Sandy Rosen. With deep gratitude and the warmest wishes, we honor the retirement of Sandy Rosen, who faithfully served AP Tahoon Community as a dedicated caregiver and site lead for nearly twenty-five years. Since 2000, Sandy has been a constant compassion, present, compassionate presence in our before and aftercare program, offering children supervision and structure, kindness, encouragement, and joy. Her wavering dedication, professionalism, and heartfelt commitment have made a lasting impression on countless childrens and families. Sandy's bond with the children she cared for, for enriched, for enriched not only for their lives, but also for her own. Her words in her retirement letter reflect the deep connections she formed and fulfilled, and fulfillment she found in work. Those relationships and the trust she built within our Wayne community are a true testament to her impact. Her children in the program appreciated all the arts and craft projects brought in with the kindness of your heart. Sandy has been more than a site lead caregiver. She has been a mentor, a friend, a beloved member of the AP Tahoon and before and aftercare family. We hope that she will continue her passion for the position by working for the new childcare company. We look forward to seeing, to still being able to eat your delicious homemade cookies and potato, and potato lekiks for many holidays to come. On behalf of the Wayne Board of Education, the Wayne Community Program, and AP Tahoon's school staff, we extend our heartfelt thanks and gratitudes to Sandy Rosen for her extraordinary service. We wish her joy, relaxation, and new adventures in her well-earned retirement. Thank you, Sandy, for twenty-four wonderful years.
This retirement is for Gina Bararty. After over two decades of dedicated service, we are honored to celebrate the retirement of Gina Bararty, an admired member of our school community. For more than twenty years, Mrs. Bararty has been a constant presence in the cafeteria and on the playground, helping to create a safe, welcoming, and joyful environment for generations of students. Whether it was offering a kind word at lunchtime, ensuring every child had a friend to play with, or gently guiding students with care and patience, Mrs. Bararty has touched countless lives with her warmth, compassion, and steady presence. Her laughter, kindness, and unwavering commitment to our children will be deeply missed by students, staff, and families alike. As Mrs. Bararty embarks on her, on this well-earned new chapter, we thank you for her years of tireless service and the love she has poured into our school. Her legacy of care and connection will remain part of our halls and hearts for many years to come. Wishing you all the best in your retirement, Gina may be filled with relaxation, adventure, and everything you love. Thank you.
I have Debbie Douglas. We bid a fond farewell to Debbie Douglas, who's retiring after more than twenty years of dedicated service at the Wayne Township Public Schools as a custodian at Skyler Colfax Middle School. Debbie began her journey with us in the early 2000s as a monitor at Wayne Hills High School, and quickly became known for her reliability, strong work ethic, and positive spirit. Over the years, she brought her commitment and care to every level of schools, high school, junior high, and elementary school, leaving a lasting impact at every stop. As she looks ahead to well-earned retirement in the warmth of North Carolina, we thank Debbie for her years of service and wish her nothing but happiness and relaxation in this exciting new chapter. Congratulations, Debbie. You always will be part of the Wayne School family.
I have the honor of reading Ms. Cologne from Wayne Valley, her retirement blurb. Ms. Cologne is a caring professional who has taught Spanish for over twenty years in the Wayne Public School District, of which most were at Wayne Valley High School. During her time at Wayne Valley, Ms. Cologne has taught all levels of Spanish language, from Spanish I to Spanish IV honors. Ms. Cologne is a cherished leader and mentor, inspiring collaborator and passionate Spanish educator. Maria's impact has reached far beyond the classroom. Her unwavering commitment and encouragement to help her students to appreciate the importance of learning a foreign language in today's global world was admirable. Maria is an educator who is constantly involved in creating, learning new methods, and bringing a fresh enthusiasm to her approach to teaching. She's empathetic while expecting the best of her students, which is nothing less than she gave to them. Maria has touched the lives of thousands of students as both an excellent educator and class advisor. Her decades of service has contributed to the success of countless young people she was charged to instruct and encourage. She has been a mentor to many student teachers and new teachers, a true leader in the World Language Department, and a separable collaborator to our school. Her legacy is woven into the stories of those she taught and worked alongside, and her influence will be felt for years to come. Maria Cologne is a role model and mentor to many of her colleagues. Her collaborative nature demonstrates her unselfish approach to education, always having the best interest of our students and the World Language Department in mind. Maria is a well-liked and respected by all her colleagues, administration, students, and parents. She never misses an opportunity to help someone or let someone know how much they are appreciated. Maria, we will miss you tremendously. We wish you many, many years of happiness, relaxation, as you transition this new chapter of your life. Congratulations on your retirement.
I have two retirement blurbs. The first is for Patricia Perotta. Prior to teaching, Ms. Perotta was an administrative assistant for upper executives at an international travel services conglomerate. After that, she was awarded the Shearing Plow Internship from Montclair State University and spent some time at the Montclair Art Museum, where she worked in the curatorial, education, and marketing departments. Ms. Perotta's experience at the MAM, along with the birth of her goddaughters, fostered her love for helping children develop both cognitively and emotionally, leading to a change in her career path. Ms. Perotta attained her teaching certification at William Patterson University in 2000, and her master's degree from Ramapo College in Educational Technology in 2004. Having earned that teaching certificate was a key to happiness, and Ms. Perotta began teaching science at George Washington Middle School in the year 2000. She learned many valuable lessons and has many fond memories from her time there. When Anthony Wayne Middle School opened, Ms. Perotta transferred there and has spent over twenty years there. She taught sixth grade for a few years, but knew that her heart belonged in eighth, and eventually asked to be changed back. She has spent almost twenty-two years teaching eighth grade and twenty-five years teaching science. Ms. Perotta has voiced many times that it has been so wonderful teaching and helping so many students and being part of the Anthony Wayne family. She has had such a rewarding career in the Wayne School District and has been given many opportunities. If you know Ms. Perotta, you know she is an animal lover. She is often found sharing pictures and stories of them. All her animals were certainly loved having her home, especially Holly, who now will be able to go on walks at any time of day. Ms. Perotta will be greatly missed, but we know she will enjoy her retirement. Arlene Mutzberg. Tonight, we are proud to honor the retirement of Arlene Mutzberg, who has been a pillar of the Wayne Board of Education's before and aftercare program for the past twenty-two years. Arlene and I were hired together in January 2003, not me, and from that day forward, she has been a trusted colleague and my best friend. I wouldn't know what to do without our partnership and daily conversations. Her presence has been a constant source of professional and personal support. Over the years, Arlene has proven to be one of the most dedicated team members we've ever had. She rarely took a day off and was always willing to step in wherever needed without hesitation. Whether managing day-to-day operations or helping solve last-minute challenges, Arlene was steadfast, dependable, and committed. Her contributions behind the scenes have been critical to the program's longevity and success. I can confidently say the program wouldn't have made it this far without her hard work, support, and unwavering dedication. She has gone above and beyond to include all participants and given extra special attention to those who needed a warm, energetic, supportive staff buddy. Arlene's love for the children, the program, and her team of caregivers has left a deep and lasting impression. The memories we've made, the laughs we've shared, and the work we've done together will always hold a special place in my heart. On behalf of the Wayne Board of Education, with my most profound personal gratitude, I congratulate Arlene Mutzberg on her well-earned retirement. We wish her continued happiness, good health, and wonderful times in this next chapter. Thank you, Arlene, for everything.
And to all retirees, on behalf of the Board, we thank you for your service to the district and the community. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens, will be open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under Old Business.
Do I have a mover?
Move.
Mr. Giordano? Mrs. Landry? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Eileen Hayes, 300 Pompton Road. I am Eileen Hayes, and I work at William Patterson University. So I know that seems a little odd that I would be here addressing you. So I know that seems a little odd that I would be here addressing you. However, I am here to speak on behalf of Andrew Imperatore from Wayne Valley High School. My office at William Patterson works with the dual enrollment program, and we have worked with Andrew, and he has been an integral asset to providing that service to the students at Wayne Valley. He works tirelessly to make sure that students have access to the application. He helps us with organizing courses for approval for William Patterson at the high school. He tracks down parents to complete their consent forms and their payments. Without his diligence, students would lose out on the benefit, of their applications would be incomplete, they would be dropped due to lack of payment. So you would have a lot fewer students at Wayne Valley High School who would have the benefit of knowing that they can both complete college-level work and building that confidence in themselves, as well as earning those credits for a much reduced cost to their parents and helping them on their college career. I would really hate to see the Wayne Valley students miss out on these opportunities to help themselves in the future by Andrew losing his job, because we work with about 39 districts, and I will tell you, I have not met another person in another district who is as helpful to us getting the program to the students in their school as Andrew is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Cindy McCann, 300 Pompton Road. I also work for William Patterson University, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Andrew Imperatore. I work with Eileen, and I echo everything she has said. Andrew, Mr. Imperatore, at Wayne Valley High School, works on the dual enrollment program. His role has been crucial to the successful operation of this program at Wayne Valley High School. He is a dedicated school counselor and colleague, who I have seen go above and beyond to ensure his students are getting every opportunity available to him. So our office is so grateful to be partnered with Wayne Towne Public Schools for dual enrollment, and to be working with someone as organized, caring, and devoted as Mr. Imperatore is. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Halsted. I live at 30 Lake Drive East in Wayne. I am a Wayne School graduate. I'm a parent, I'm a teacher, and I'm a taxpayer, and I want to take a moment to sincerely thank each and every one of you for being here, and more importantly, for listening. Listening not just to words, but to the voices. The voices of a community that rose together to express concern, gratitude, and deep admiration for someone who has truly made a difference, Rachel Hoffbauer. As an educator and a proud member of this community, I've come to understand that success is not measured by titles, salaries, or accolades. It's measured by impact. It's about the lives you touch, the hearts you lift, and the futures you help shape. Over the past days, I believe we've all been reminded of the truth in the most powerful way. Dozens of people, students, athletes, colleagues, parents, and friends stood up and spoke out, each one sharing how Rachel's presence has lit a spark in their lives. Their words weren't rehearsed, they were real, they were raw, they were a testament to the legacy that Rachel is building, not just within the walls of her classroom, but the hearts of the entire community. Now, I can only imagine the storm of emotions that Rachel must be feeling. On one hand, she's received an overwhelming outpouring of love and support, messages from the past, encouragement from the present, and admiration from all corners of Wayne. To know that you've made such a meaningful difference in so many lives, that's the highest honor anyone in our profession can receive. And yet, on the other hand, uncertainty still looms. Questions remain. The path ahead is unclear, and that is not an easy burden to bear. But here's where Rachel's story becomes extraordinary. Since the moment she was told of her nonrenewal, Rachel has continued to show up, not just physically, but fully, with focus, with humility, with unwavering dedication. Her heart remains locked on one purpose, the social, emotional, and academic well-being of her students. That is the mark of a true educator. That is the character of someone who just doesn't teach content but inspires character, someone who just doesn't prepare students for tests but prepares them for life. So let's let Rachel's example be a lesson to all of us, that even in the face of adversity, grace and resilience can shine. That's where we choose purpose over pride, love over fear, and students over self. We can create ripples of change that extend far beyond what we may ever see. To Rachel, thank you. And to this community, let's continue to raise our voices, not only for what is right, but for those who quietly make all the difference, because in the end, the greatest measure of any school, any district, and any community is the courage to stand behind those who stand for our children. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessica Capadana. I'm a senior at Wayne Valley, and I live at 44 Almadera Drive. I'm here today to talk about someone who has made a major impact in my life, Mr. Imperatore. My freshman year, I entered Wayne Valley, assuming I would go through my four years with my guidance counselor barely even knowing my name. About halfway through my freshman year, my boyfriend Rocco was diagnosed with cancer. Immediately, I shut down. I refused to talk to my feelings, about my feelings with anyone. When the word got around school, I was called down to guidance. As I walked down to the office, I told myself there was no way I would share my feelings with someone who I barely even knew. I walked into Mr. Imperatore's office and sat down. When he began to talk to me about the situation, I suddenly felt safe and able to share the feelings I had bottled up. Not only did he listen to all of the emotions I was going through, but he validated my feelings. As Rocco's cancer worsened, he passed away in May. When I came to school two days after he passed, I had people coming up to me that I didn't even know, saying that I could talk to them. It was at that moment that I realized that the only person I was willing to open up to was Mr. Imperatore. I walked straight down to his office and sat down and just started crying to him. He sat with me and skipped his lunch break just to hear what I had to say. I entered his office, wondering how I was going to be able to continue on when the person I was closest to had died, and I left his office laughing and feeling relieved that I was able to talk to Mr. Imperatore. I came to him with all the many different feelings I felt through the whole grieving process, and he led me through each and every single emotion. He never made me feel alone or lost, and told me how I had a right to be angry at the world, that he was angry at the world as well. To this day, Mr. Imperatore was the only person who could get me to talk about my feelings. Not only did he validate me, but he gave me a reason to look forward to coming to school. He became one of my biggest supporters, encouraging me to study for the test site and have the energy to study for, saying hello to me in the hallways, and supporting me in my extracurricular activities. I will never forget the way Mr. Imperatore changed my mindset after everything that had happened. If it wasn't for him, I'm not sure where I'd be today. Mr. Imperatore brings a light to Wayne Valley. I am so lucky to have had him as my guidance counselor all four years of high school, as I could not have gone through this experience without him. Wayne Valley needs a guidance counselor like Mr. Imperatore, a counselor who doesn't hesitate to skip their lunch break to make sure you're okay, a counselor who actually knows you by your name and isn't just around when it's time to make your schedule. I hope you can reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adonia David, and I'm a senior at Wayne Valley High School, and I'm speaking on behalf of Andrew Imperatore. And, sorry. I transferred schools last year from Wayne Hills. Switching schools and coming to a new school is really hard, but Mr. Imperatore made me feel so welcome. Although he's not my assigned guidance counselor, he's always there for me, and if I, if I need him, he never fails to make me laugh. He's not just a guidance counselor, he's also a friend. He's really dedicated to his job and has definitely made my senior year a lot less stressful. Me and along with the rest of the school would love to have him stay so that the incoming freshmen and future students of Wayne Valley would have a guidance counselor who is always there for him. Please reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Lori Centron, I am the New Jersey Education Association representative for about 1,000 of your employees, the Wayne Education Association, the Wayne Custodian Maintenance Association, and the Wayne Power Association. And your budget issues have impacted many, many of my members. We all know, those of us in education, we know that there are non-renewals that come every May 15th. And we know that there are some that get hired back, and we know there's some that leave. April 28th, 29th, and 30th of this year was probably the worst week of the lives of many people in this district. They went to work on Monday morning, Tuesday morning, Wednesday morning, and they left with their world overturned. They didn't have a job. I have people who have performance issues all of a sudden. They have asked for their Donaldson hearings, and they have been granted their hearings, and we will see you on May 29th. But I have some RIFs. And for those of us in the public who don't know what a RIF is, that's a reduction in force. And I just find, that's not my three minutes, yeah, right? Okay. Their letters were a little different. Their letters said, "Due to economic reasons." They're non-tenured people. I have two guidance counselors, one in each high school, who are non-tenured, but they are RIFed. That means that they're technically on your side, telling us that they can't get a hearing. RIFs don't get one. We don't agree with that. Both of them would be getting tenure in September. So I have my own theory as to why they were RIFed and not non-renewed. Okay? I have two secretaries in the guidance department as well, who have been RIFed, not non-renewed. In the modern day of mental health and social and everything, taking two guidance counselors out of a high school, where these students who you just heard depend on them, is real detrimental. And I'm going to ask you two things. Think about that first and rethink, and maybe in the goodness of your heart, you can tell your superintendent, your board attorney, let's just listen to these four people who asked for hearings for 10 minutes and give them their opportunity to speak. That's all that I'm asking from you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Sinkew. I live at 4 Echo Court with three school-aged children. For a little bit of my background, I've been teaching all levels, including advanced placement French at Clifton High School for 21 years. I'm the head coach there of the girls' flag football team, where I'm also an assistant coach for the girls' soccer, basketball, and lacrosse teams. Most recently, I have accepted a position to coach college-level flag football as well. So to say I know a little bit about high school-aged children and the education system in our area would probably be an understatement. At Wayne Valley High School, the recent layoff of a beloved counselor and the head flag football coach has left students, parents, and community members stunned and deeply concerned. Mr. Imperatore has been a cornerstone of the school, dedicating countless hours not just to his official responsibilities, but to the personal growth and well-being of the students that he mentors. As a counselor, he is a trusted confidant, guiding students through academic challenges, emotional struggles, and the stressful college application process. His office is always open, his support unwavering. In his role as the head flag football coach, he has brought energy, discipline, and team spirit to a program that has grown tremendously under his leadership. More than just a coach, he is a mentor who has taught young athletes the importance of teamwork, perseverance, and respect. His layoff is not just the loss of a staff member, it's the loss of a vital figure in the lives of many young people, as you've heard. The void he will leave behind will be felt throughout the school hallways and on the field. Upon hearing the news, students immediately began speaking out, expressing their sadness and confusion as to what's happening here. Mr. Imperatore has been a pillar of the school community, someone whose presence extends far beyond the confines of his job description. As a counselor, he's the first person many students turn to in times of personal or academic difficulty. He offers not just advice, but genuine care, compassion, and guidance. As the head flag football coach, Mr. Imperatore brings passion, energy, and mentorship to the field. Under his leadership, there's no doubt what those girls can do. As a taxpayer, it's incredibly disheartening to witness these types of cuts happening in our community. We invest in our schools not just to educate, but to nurture and support our children. Mr. Imperatore has certainly taken a step in all the directions that we want to be moving in. I respectfully urge the Board of Education to reconsider their decision and reinstate Mr. Imperatore for the sake of our students and our community. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I move to close. Mr. Giordano, Mr. Batterish. Any old business? New business? Board member comments? Mr. Giordano?
Thank you. Couple of things I want to say before we get moving here. Congratulations to Elizabeth and DeSara for their awards. That was fantastic, for shot put and backstroke. My congratulations to the competition cheer for their championships. Wrestling's North won group three state championships. This is an example of what can happen when we come together as a community. What I'm seeing in front of me is also an example of what happens when a community comes together. First of all, I also want to acknowledge all the special education teachers, and this is a week of reflection for students who don't always fit the natural mold that society has given to them. We're finding out more and more, even in my studies, that there is no real ice cube tray of education. Everybody comes out of square. So we're having to learn how to do things like differentiated instruction and working in different techniques, and it makes teaching much more difficult, but it also makes it much more valuable to society. I'm not a happy person right now. I am gut-wrenching by what's going on, and I'll tell every single person up here that came to that mic the exact same words. You're all right. You, everything you said is 100%. But we're at a point right now where we've got a, basically, we've got a financial gun to the back of our heads, and they're telling us, "Choose. Okay, so let's bring everybody back." And then when I take a list and put it up on the board and said, "You picked the one who's got to go home. You picked the teacher. You picked the counselor. You picked the coach." Because right now, we don't got it. And the reason why we don't got it, and I don't normally comment on what people say, but somebody came in last week and said, "Don't talk about the referendum." Stick it in your ear, I'm talking about the referendum. If I cross the street and somebody runs me over, and I'm in a hospital for six months, I'm going to talk about the guy who ran me over. Don't come back to me three or four months later and say, "Oh, it's three months ago, don't worry about it." No. I was furious at those meetings. I was furious at a certain politician who kind of turned around and shot that down for us. And if you go on the computer on the Wayne website, you'll see I had a few words to say to the gentleman who came to one of our meetings. He was here today, I'm sorry, he left already tonight. And why am I mad? Because of this. Because I have to watch good people come up here and speak the truth, and I still have to say no in some cases. That's heart-wrenching. To the person who gave the list over to Dr. Toback, please take a look at it. Because I'm always up here saying, "You got a better idea? Come let us know. Thank you for bringing that up and letting us know. I'll make sure, at the very least, that we pursue every single possibility." Grants are touch and go, and if anybody here does grants, you know it's touch and go. We're pretty good at writing them, we're pretty good at going at them. I'll be the first one to say, "Hecky, I'll take that money. Hecky, I'll keep that teacher. Hecky, I'll keep that program." My daughter played violin going through school, just before strings started. I know the values of it. I was a professional educator. I can sit up here all night long to talk about the psychology of cognitive studies, and about mathematics and the application in music. I can talk about that till I'm blue in the face, and you guys would fall asleep on it. It's true, and it's right in its head. That's why I was here. But let's say that, "Okay, we'll keep the strings program. No, let's cut the band program." You think that's going to go over well? Let's cut football. You think that's going to go over well? Let's cut the play. You think that's going to go well? None of this is going to go over well. And I'm not saying because it's 2%, something had to give. We're riffing people who are fantastic employees. There is no doubt about it. You just testified and told them they're fantastic, and we've got to lose them. And I guarantee you, because they're fantastic employees, they're going to snatch up a job before June, because they're that good. If somebody calls me and asks me about, say, "Hecky, I take them. They're really good. Why can't you have them? Well, you didn't see the papers? We have no money." And a lot of places have lost a lot more. Instead of talking about them, not trying to belittle the strings program, but imagine losing 51 teachers. 51! That's in South Jersey. Where have we closed two school buildings? Two school buildings! You think the place is going to be empty here? They're going to be up on pitchforks and torches. Everyone up here is agonizing over this. We had to leave here and go into the executive session, so we get to sit and agonize for another 45 minutes, and come out with an imperfect solution to an imperfect situation. I'm not going to stand up here and blame the referendum. I'm done talking about the referendum at this point. And I've spoken my piece. Why? Because now you are seeing the results of it right now, and you're seeing the reason why I was ticked off back in November when it went down. It had nothing to do with ego. It had nothing to do with politics. I knew from being here for six years that I was going to have to sit up here for an hour and a half and two hours and have people tell me the truth, and I can't do a damn thing about it. So no, I'm not happy about this right now here, so we need to come together as a community. to come together as a community. And thank you for the person bringing up the list of grants there. We need to have you continue coming up, not just telling us the truth, but help us find solutions. Because we've got some pretty smart people up here, and we're at a loss on a lot of this. And we need your help. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I want to congratulate all the student athletes that were here tonight, all the champions. Also want to thank everyone who came up here tonight. And I also want to thank our student representatives. Did a great job. They're not here anymore, but if they're watching on TV, Roll Tide for Addison. Go Hoosiers to Isabella. They'll do really well, and hopefully, we'll see them on the board one of these days. So I just want to comment on a bunch of things. As you saw on the agenda, we pulled V8. That was the shared services contract. It's not a money issue now. It's with the mayor, and it's with the town council. We sent an agreement. We're all good with the money. However, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, there's common sense language that you took out. Sign it the way we put it in. There's common sense language. This is a one-sided deal for the town. It needs to be a shared deal. There's common sense for our children in that language, that you're playing with the security of our children. It's not about money. The money's there. The money, we found the money. We all settled on the money. But why are you, we saw a redlined agreement that they struck out, all these common sense items. So please tell the mayor, tell your representatives on the council, sign the contract the way we sent it in. Okay? So that's for our children. I saw all these things on Facebook saying, "Oh, there's no price on our children, you know, pay whatever the town is asking for," whatever. We came to that agreement. The contract, as far as money goes, is done. Okay? Right now, they said no, and struck away, struck out, redlined, common sense language that really undermines the security of our children and our schools. So they need to step up. So that's that. Second, thank you for the, for all the parents' concern about the strings. You know, I saw many of the emails, email responses from our assistant superintendent. You know, it's about $250,000. That's three to four teachers that we'd have to get rid of. But thank you for the solutions. I know with the grants, I know our assistant superintendent, as a matter of fact, today was saying, you know, "I need to look into some grants." And coincidentally, you know, you know, come here. We're only a few people here. We're only a few administrators here. We can't see everything. So if there's grants that we've seen and we tried, hey, if you show it to us, okay, yeah, we've seen this grant, you know, we haven't. So if there's, you know, there's just so many things that we can do. So if you see grants, you know, give them to us. You know, that definitely helps. This is one community. What really hit me today also was the lady who's the Clifton Flag Football Head Coach who came up here. She said four words that I think we all need to think about. The four words she said was "invest in our schools." The mayor and thousands of other people who believed him struck down the referendum, which was an investment in our schools. So, I mean, that, that right there, the town voted not to invest in our schools, not to invest in our children, not to invest in my children. So there's consequences. This is the last time I'm going to say this. There's consequences, you know? We're talking millions of dollars that could have been saved, millions of dollars coming back to us from the state that we would have saved. So, and then, you know, we're talking about, we had to do riffs. A riff is a reduction in force. That position has gone away. Doesn't matter who was in that position. That position is not going to come back again. It's gone. So I think I've, you know, said enough for tonight, so I'll pass it on to somebody else.
Thank you. Mrs. Lumandry.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for sitting so patiently, and I, it's just, it's emotional to see the support for just so many different things that we're all passionate about, right? People you care about, programs you love. So at the end of the day, you know, you can't get water out of a rock. So I'll leave that there. I also would like to congratulate these two young men. Amazing, amazing, amazing. First of all, your love of music is beautiful. Totally blessed my heart. Secondly, you spoke so well and articulated how you felt and how music made you feel, and how, all these wonderful things going on in your lives, whether or not the strings program, we can salvage it, we can do anything, regardless, pursue music. Pursue it with all of your heart. Just keep going. And you too, young man, I'm sorry, I said, but the three of you, actually, and your parents too, and everybody who spoke about the strings program. We all felt that, like, as soon as we saw it come across the table, we were like, "Oh, no," you know? We dread these things, you know? It's really, really dreadful. It's hard. But anyway. So thank you. Thank you all for being here and for listening and for being patient with the process and the things that we have to do. Everybody's working hard to try to make things work. Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Alk, could...
I just want to congratulate all the student athletes who wanted tonight, and also everyone who came up to speak, you know, when you heard what you were saying. And I'm just going to switch gears real fast and just touch on a meeting I went to on May 7th at the Wayne Community Center with Wayne Special Education Parent Advisory Group and also the Wayne Special Parents Association. Discussions around this meeting were centered around more ways to get parents involved with the groups, as there hasn't been, you know, too much attendance. But these meetings are a great chance for parents to meet other parents in similar circumstances and also have a more personal and in-depth conversation with the district's Student Support Service Leadership Team. Because in attendance to these meetings is the Director of Student Services, Dr. Surr, AP Richard Perschuto, and AP Caroline DiVarcario. And just two quick things I would discuss is, they're looking to start up a mentorship program where parents will help other parents, and this is in the beginning stages, so more will come about that. Just keep an eye out. And something else pretty cool was the Segal family, along with the Wayne Education Foundation, have started up the Bright Futures Scholarship and Extraordinary Minds. This scholarship will award one graduate from Wayne Valley and one from Wayne Hills with $1,000. And this scholarship could be used for college tuition, vocational, technical certifications, training, and transportation. But the only issue with that is the deadline to apply is tomorrow, May 16th. So, short notice, but head to wayneeducationfoundation.org if you want to apply for that. And the final CPAG Wayne Spa meeting is going to be on June 11th, the final one of the school year, and that's going to be at the Wayne Community Center. You can bring your kids. There'll be activities for them to do and some snacks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baddish?
Sure. So I'll just piggyback on something that Wilson started there as well. About two weeks ago, the CPAG group as well donated the funds from the Turkey Trot for Unified Sports and so on as well. And so I think this week, being Special Education Week, is a really good week to start talking about some of the funding we get for these things. Those actually helped my children integrate and work alongside a much wider, broader range of people, which they continue to today. It makes them really much more real people by being involved with Unified Sports and helping some of the special education kits and so on along the way. And I think it really helps the special education kids see that people care about them. So I've been very pleased to be able to support the Turkey Trot and find from the Turkey Trot that that's really enabled us to continue to fund the Unified Sports thing, and being able to cover that in Special Education Week, I think, is a fantastic thing. In addition to that, we did the second reading on the AI thing. Hopefully, everybody heard last week and one way to look at that. But that really can help with things like the multi-tiered support system that we have in place and the differentiated education, as Matt put it earlier. And that really can help drive and make those systems a lot easier to be able to do by driving towards an ability to be able to get individualized lesson plans and individualized actions that come out of there, which is really going to help everybody to be able to move forward. So I'm very pleased to be able to get some of those things moving on Special Education Week as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Regalso.
Real quick, you guys have sat here long enough. I want to congratulate Wayne Valley, Wayne Hills, on their outstanding accomplishments. Congratulations to all the student athletes, but especially the parents and coaches. Isabella and Addison, that aren't here with us, but they were great in reporting all the highlights of both high schools. It was really, you know, really fun to hear. Boys, when you're in Carnegie Hall, you better send us some tickets, because you guys are the real deal. And I'd love to hear you play that violin one day. I think you should have brought that violin today. That really would have been that.
We'll be here the next week.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I wish I could put a cherry on top on our budget, but we're going to try our best. We listen, we hear you. We go home, we think about it, we talk about it, not just once a month, every single day. We're just trying to make the best decisions we can for the district, and we're going to listen, and we try. That's pretty much it. You know, I really want to thank Nancy Clausen. I want to welcome you to Wayne, and I loved hearing about your family history. And thank you so much for a list of all the grants. I think that's great. I know you're on the State Board, and I know you know Mr. Paterno very well. And this is what we need. We need to put our heads together and come up with solutions. And I think we're doing it. I think it's working. Sometimes, when things don't go well, it brings the community to get together, and I think we're going to be okay. We're going to talk about it, and we're going to see what we can do. All right?
We have a few more solutions if you need them as well.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I just want to mention that Nancy is from the Garfield District, where we always have solutions, right, Nance? Thank you very much, everyone. Good night, and I really appreciate you coming out.
Lastly, guys, you were great. You would have hit it with the show, and I can see why. You were so articulate in your speeches, and believe me, we hear what you're saying. I can't make you any promises, but I can tell you, things are so dynamic now. Every day, things are changing. And how we got here is a story for another time. I'm not going to belabor the point, but there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle that have caused what's happening now in this district and other districts in the state. So, you know, people want to go on social media and point the finger at us and say, "Oh, it's you." Take a look at the newspaper. Nutley's looking at cutting sports. Another district's looking at cutting whatever out. You have districts that are selling properties, selling schools. Got to tell you something. It's not just us. It's the state. And again, that's a whole nother issue for another night. But we hear what you're saying. Lafayette people, again, we hear you. You know we can't answer you, but we do hear you. I promise you that. Mrs. Sinqueau, your words too impacted me, when you said, "Invest in the schools." That's what we need to do. That's what the, and I hate to go back there, but that's what the referendum was about. And I think it was Clifton that just passed a referendum the other night for $386 million, or something along those lines. Yeah. They did it in Clifton. We voted it down here 2 to 1. And I'm not getting into pointing fingers or not, but you know what? We have to realize something here. And then we're going to have to come up with another referendum, folks. I'm telling you that now. And it's got to come, because if it doesn't, two years from now, this is going to look like nothing. It's going to. One last, and I want to congratulate the athletics, all the athletes in the dance team and everyone. Great job by everyone with that. I want to, one last thing I want to address is V8, which was pulled from tonight. The mayor did work with us monetarily. We got there. But at the last board meeting, we approved a contract that not only prioritized safety, but also about accountability and transparency. And I hear that word transparency a lot. The two negotiable principles when it comes to protecting our schools. The township returned the contract to us with no explanation, other than, "No, we're not doing it that way, and that's it." And this has nothing to do with the police officers. I want to say that again. It's nothing to do with the officers that are there. This is what's happening with the administration. And let me tell you what they cut out. We asked for monthly activity reports. We requested reports to understand what the assigned officers are doing in the schools. This was about oversight and collaboration, not micromanagement. The township rejected it without comment. $1 million, roughly. I'm paying what we're paying, you're paying $1 million, but you don't know what you're getting. We asked for notification. Let us know who the officers are that you're going to assign to our schools. We asked for a 20-day notice. They told us, "No, we're not telling you. You get who we give you." We asked if there was issues with any of the officers. We wanted to have a codified process to work through in writing. They declined it without comment. This is the one, and I will never sign this contract or vote for the contract. We asked that an officer, if an officer calls out sick or takes a day off, we asked the town, in our version of the contract, we stated that that spot had to be backfilled by the Police Department. The contract the town gave us said, "Well, they'll try. And if they can't try, guess what? There'll be no security in that school that day. I'm not taking that chance." That goes against everything we talked about here. We asked that officers be in the schools at certain days, around holidays, the beginning of the school, the end of the school year, the prime time when we need to upgrade our security. They declined that. We asked for a process of having the superintendent have the ability to meet with the SROs, who are going to be assigned to the schools. They said no. They said no to actually everything that we put in. Not one of the things costs one dime. It's about accountability and transparency. And I know the next, when the next meeting sits in here, they're going to be blasting us left and right. That's fine. I'm a big boy. I can stand up for it. But the bottom line is, we're talking safety of people, of our children. If the town's really committed to the safety that they say they are, there's no reason any of these pieces that we put in, we asked to be in the contract are going, can not be there. There's nothing. It doesn't cost them a dime. When you're contracting somebody for $1 million, don't you want to know what they're doing? I don't think it's unreasonable to ask what they're doing for $1 million. You know, this board remains committed to working in good faith with the township to reach resolution to this, and I just hope we could sit down and agree to it. And I don't, I hate to do this. I don't like to negotiate a contract in public. But you just get to the point where you get so frustrated and that everything's going to be our way, or no way. There's no reason for it. But again, I'm not going to sign a contract that's going to compromise a staff member, a student, or anyone else. And I don't think what we're asking for...